This is really the neat part of the job for me. I met this gentleman two weekends ago when they were dedicating a library sign for Suji at the library. Was that two weekends ago?
Yeah.
And that meeting, my wife and I met him, and that meeting touched me significantly. And upon learning further about his and his wife's story, I felt it important to recognize some of the talents and some of the folks that we have in our community. So I'll read this proclamation. "Town of Signal Mountain, Tennessee proclamation. Whereas Frank Hill graduated from the Citadel and thereafter served in the United States Army until 1954, the same year he and Betty Sue Conley were wed, and whereas Frank and Betty Sue Hill have made Signal Mountain their home since 1959, living and raising their children in the same house for all the years since, and whereas Frank and Betty Sue have dedicated themselves to their community and fellow citizens through coaching youth tennis, being active in their church, providing fellowship and church ministry to the homebound, and through the expression and sharing of their artistic talents. And whereas Frank is built from raw materials without models, and Betty Sue has painstakingly painted dozens of extremely detailed and historically accurate scale models of significant woodships, ultimately donating eight of these masterfully wrought vessels to the Signal Mountain Library, where they are displayed for the enjoyment of all patrons and have truly become the gems of our library. And whereas Frank and Betty Sue are cherished members of this community, themselves serving as models of dedication, perseverance, love, service, and generosity, now therefore the Town Council of the Town of Signal Mountain, Tennessee does hereby commend and thank Frank and Betty Sue Hill for the great and wide-ranging contributions they have made to this community and its citizens. In honor of Frank and Betty Sue Hill and a testament to their love for each other, their family, this community, and their fellow citizens, the Town Council of the Town of Signal Mountain, Tennessee does hereby proclaim February 14th, 2018, is hereby designated and shall be Frank and Betty Sue Hill Day in the Town of Signal Mountain, Tennessee. Reclaim and conferred this 12th day of February 2018." Frank, would you speak? Frank, would you like to say anything?
Thank you. Thank you immensely for this thing that you have said about me. I would like to say one thing. Youngsters are my kingdom. When I was 14 years old at a service station working, there was a gentleman that came by and gave me a diamond tip every Saturday. And after a few days, weeks like this, he came up and told me, you know, I've noticed that you are working as a youngster, and I would like to bring my grandson over to show him to you. This was a World War I veteran, this was his grandson. But I said to myself, if I ever get enough situation where I can help youngsters, I will be happy. And I have been associated with 38 girls. I never charged them anything on behalf of tennis. One of my daughters played very well.
The only player ACC history to win the singles title four years running.
Wow. But I never charged anything to the girls except they had to invite me to their weddings. Ten of them did, and I was able to attend seven of their weddings. But I would like to say that I thought that the youngsters would like the Santa Maria, the Penta, the Nina, and the Pilgrims. And that's why I had those particular models in the library. But I want to say that Mrs. Glenn Denny runs a tight ship. She has a good sense of direction, and she told me one time that she liked ships, and I thought maybe I could help. And thank you for this nice statement that you have made.
Yeah, let's do that. Yeah, we'll do it. You know, the ships that you saw there are made from a single block of wood. No kidding. That's the type of talent that Frank has. If you haven't seen them in the library, you've got to go ride and see them. They're amazing. Just tell us how long it takes to make them.
Well, the first ship that's sitting at the top of the library, it took me five years to work on. I'm not working them a company at the time. But in general, a ship model takes me about two to two and a half years.
And you made how many of them?
Well, I have made a number of them, but here, we have, you know, the A, the quarter I made boarding one.
And Betty Sue paints each one of those, and they are historically accurate. It's really amazing. Thank you, sir.
I'm a very lucky guy because Frank Hill's a member of my book club. So I hear lots of stories.
Very grateful. Thank you. Moving on, we have approval minutes, but we have no minutes to approve, so we can skip right to there. And to citizens' opportunity to address the council. Would we like to begin?
Mayor, if I may, before we begin, we have a guest in the audience.
Okay, good. I need to add that too.
And we have a representative of Unify Ed. Her name is Alexa LeBeau. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Not too bad. That's good, okay. We're delighted to have you here late. She is not on the agenda, so I would ask that she be allowed to speak during this time to introduce herself.
Absolutely.
Now's the time?
Yep.
Thank you. Well, thank you for having me. I would like to thank the Town of Signal Mountain for allowing me to speak tonight. And I understand I have three minutes?
Three minutes.
So timer has started. So I'm here for Unify Ed, we're a small local nonprofit in Hamilton County. We've been around about three and a half years, and right now our current campaign is focusing on ensuring that every young person in our county, regardless of their zip code, has access to a quality education. We've called this campaign Apex, which is the Action Plan for Educational Excellence. And what we've done is through a series of thousands of conversations across our community, asked what they wanted to see in a policy platform. And we took those initial 25 ideas that we found from 2,600 conversations, put it into a school bus, drove it around the county, and asked people to pick their top seven priorities. The results are top 10 issues, which will inform our organizing in the coming year. A lot of what has driven our work is the belief that every single voice in our county matters, just like every single young person in our county matters. So tonight I wanted to talk about a proposed initiative that has come as a result of some brainstorming by community members who live here in Signal Mountain. And the idea is that Unify Ed would like to offer their time and their services to facilitate a conversation between members of Stay With HCD-E as well as friends of Signal Mountain schools. And the idea is that we would just like to be a facilitator, a support mechanism, someone who would put in our time and capacity to help conversation get started. The goals of those conversations would include reaching a consensus on what the educational issues are on Signal Mountain, what do people see as the deficiencies, and how can it be improved or expanded based on folks' lived experience up here. Second, ideas on how these problems can be addressed. Again, every voice matters. We really believe in elevating every idea and finding a way to move forward. Can we, that being Signal Mountain, Walden, and UHC, solve some of the issues on our own? Do we work with HCD-E on addressing these issues? How do we approach HCD-E? And lastly, is there a way to make this more than about Signal Mountain, so residents see that they are not operating in a vacuum within the district and just hoping to facilitate an open conversation? So that's all I have. I think I'm at two minutes. Thank you for your time. I really look forward to working with you on more, and thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
What I'd like to do is reserve some time later in the meeting to explore this a little bit, or if you want to do it now, but I would like to take some time to figure out what resources you have available to us. If we're the right person to talk to, or whether there's an opportunity to do so, we just need to flesh it out a little bit. But thank you for being here forever. And thank you, Dick, for bringing us here.
If I may impose for a second, I want to introduce Chris Story. Chris, would you stand up for just a second? Chris is a senior at Signal Mountain Middle High School, and he is shadowing the council as part of his senior project. And he's been to several meetings, but thank you for being here, Chris. All right, back to public comments. Who would like to go next?
Ms. Hall?
Good evening. My name's Annie Hall. Thank you for this opportunity. I applaud you for your commitment to excellence in our public schools. You've worked hard, and I really appreciate that. I know a number of people in the room do too. I'm really, I'm going to address the idea that Mayor Howley recommended that the Town of Signal Mountain create its own education committee. And I feel like the proposed committee would be duplicative and might in fact diminish the effectiveness of two boards which already exist, namely those which the Mountain Education Fund has. Citizen volunteers serve on Mountain Education Fund Board of Directors and Mountain Education Fund Advisory Board. They're actively engaged in providing ongoing support to achieve and maintain academic excellence for all Signal Mountain students. The MEF Board is responsible for fundraising, overseeing the daily operation of the foundation, setting policies and goals, and maintaining the foundation's budget. Members in this board serve a three-year term. The MES Advisory Board identifies priority funding needs for each of our three schools. The administrators and PTA officers from Thrasher-Nolan and Signal Mountain Middle High School are executive members of the advisory board. I have the privilege of serving on this board with Katie's wife, Sue. Instead of creating another citizens committee, perhaps the towns of Signal and Walden could work with the MEF to create positions for municipal representatives on either or both of these boards. This would certainly strengthen our community's tradition of working in partnership with residents, businessmen and women, and educators to advance excellence in Signal Mountain schools. I have a copy of my statement for each of you, along with on the back of it, the list of the Signal Mountain's volunteers who serve on the two boards. I just referenced one.
Thank you, Annie.
My address is 12 High Down Court.
Thank you, Annie.
My name is Mindy Oren, 1143 James Boulevard. I just have a question about the zoning tonight. Alan, what you're doing now is consider the public hearing for the thing, the zoning that's coming up, ordinance tonight?
It is not. This would be the initial, and ordinance is, will take two hearings, I'm sorry, two votes. And the public hearing will be right before the next vote, which would probably be next, at this meeting next month. You're more than welcome to keep going.
So there will be no discussion about that with public input from the public's morning?
Not tonight, no. Right? Well, you can give it now. So if you want to, you can give it now, but there's actually a public hearing that has to go along with the ordinance, and that'll be held before the second vote, which would be what we're anticipating. Is a public hearing denied, or is it, it's at the next regular meeting, right? So, but it doesn't matter. You can still address the issue now. You can address whatever you'd like now.
Well, I guess I'm confused then. So you're going to vote tonight, and then there'll be a public hearing, and then that will...
And then there'll be another vote. Ordinance is required.
I just, I thought it was a public hearing tonight, but I guess I was confused.
No, but you can, this is now public. If you want to address the issue, you can address it now.
Okay, well, I may have to do it again.
About two minutes remaining.
Okay.
Why don't we reset her time?
Yeah, absolutely.
So three minutes. Your original three minutes.
It was more.
Okay, I was just making sure. I'll start that. I want to make sure.
Well, I'll, you know, tell you what I'm thinking. My first concern is with our current procedures at the planning commission meetings. As it stands, when there was a rezoning that's put forth before the planning commission, only the developer is given the opportunity to speak, and the public is not given a chance to voice their concerns before the planning commissions speaks or to respond to what the developer proposes. This was brought up in the last planning commission as they were about to make a vote, and it just seems kind of strange that the public is not given a chance to say anything about the development that was brought forth for them. And when that was brought up, there was really very reason that was brought up as to why this was the case. It just was, and it's not the case in Chattanooga, because I know I've done that. But I'm just wondering if this was a procedure that could be changed and give the public a chance to give their input before the planning commission votes on a rezon, or to recommend a rezoning to you. So that would be my first question.
Can we respond to that, Chris, if you might?
It is something that can be changed, but it's just not the way that it's been done here. So it's not anybody new, you don't want to hear from the public. And also Cheryl did ask homeowner who lives close by to speak at that meeting as well. It's just not formalized, and it's something we can look at. And other municipalities do it differently than we do.
It was later.
How is that covered? Where is that covered? Should be on their rules and procedure for how they handle their regular meetings on here. So it's not matter looking at it.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, there's no set state law that you have to do it one way or another. And they merely make a recommendation for the council on here, and they should hear what's involved. They're mainly looking at it from the aspect of, does this meet the zoning requirements anytime a request for rezoning is made? So that's one of the things they're looking at on the law.
I just felt a sense that they wanted to hear from us too, you know, what our concern was, because that could have generated some more conversation, and Cheryl did do that. It was after the developer had left, and it was really the number of times that the meeting said it was on time.
Right, yeah, because it's not formalized. But I think it's a great idea. If we could formalize that and make it better.
Can we look at that at our Mexican meeting? The city of Chattanooga and their normal council meetings on there will deal with that issue with a certain amount of time for the persons that are requesting rezoning and a certain amount of time for a response. But that's not necessarily the case in the planning commission. I think they give both sides an opportunity, but they don't give the same amount of time.
Exactly, yeah. I understand that part.
Instead of, I mean, if we need to, I'm going to give you some more time. Let's just ask Cheryl to bring it up at their next meeting, and then we can discuss it. We have some feedback at that time, but it's really something the planning commission's got to take up and talk about. Yes, all right, ma'am.
I'm going to just break it up now, just so I know what the point is now at this point. But currently, our commercial office district stops at Albert Road, and I just wanted to ask if we're going to continue past Albert Road, will this council be open to more office and commercial space past the location that this rezoning is requested? And then, so based on that, I would just wonder what would be your justification then for denying future office or commercial down the path, past where this proposed development is? And I guess I'll just say my last concern for the public hearing, since it's...
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Next.
Anne Haywood, 506 James Boulevard. Since we're talking about the rezoning request, and you will be voting on it for the first vote tonight, as was pointed out in the planning commission meeting where this matter was heard, under Tennessee law, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Phil?
Yes, ma'am.
We can ask for more than is actually in our ordinances.
You can ask for conditions to be placed on a zoning here in Hamilton County, if that is a provision that is allowed. Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful, thank you. So given that fact, I would ask you to, if you decide to vote in favor of this request, I would ask you to consider seven items. If you would jot them down so they'll be in front of you to think about. Conditions would be that it be office-only. I'm sorry.
I feel like I'm in class.
I'm speaking from my end of the short delivery. If you would ask that they make this office only rather than anything else, that they make it a one-story building, that they work with the DRC on design and color to fit in, and that's not anything to limit them, but just to help them understand what we want our community to look like. That they reduce the parking requirement, as the planning commission has recommended, from five spaces per thousand square feet to four and a half, or even four. That they have that 30-foot green buffer to be adjoining properties. That they have tree islands in the parking lot, at least one for every seven spaces. And that they use permeable parking to alleviate some of our stormwater runoff causes. Thank you.
Thank you. And you're aware, many of those items were discussed in the planning commission.
Yes.
We'll give you, how about we give you another minute?
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'm sorry. It's fine, it's fine.
Go ahead.
In light of what you said, I think, you know, this is kind of what I was going to say. I am concerned about this development of this property. I think it's too large for the size. But I, after the planning commission, did talk, called the developer, Mr. Elliott, here, and we had a long conversation about this, and he said that he would be willing to work with the public, and he would like to hear the feedback from the community before this final review. And I talked to him about a public hearing in which we could review his design, incorporate the ideas of the public, and I would like that to be a stipulation as well on this, that there is a chance for the public to have a conversation and him incorporate ideas from the citizens at a public hearing, given to the citizens to do before this is signed off, if that is the direction we decide to go.
Thank you. And that is the procedure. That will happen. That's what happened. Thank you. Next.
Can we verify that? Because I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that's true, Dick.
There will be a public hearing at the council meeting on here. If he wishes to meet with the public before that meeting, that would be something the developer should do.
Right, right. I'm not speaking for or against, but Wendy said, I don't think that there is a stipulation that the developer meets with the public separate from this that's required.
That could always be a reason for a deferral of a final reading until such time as such a meeting would occur.
So in general, and this is the discussion we had at the end, it's just for everyone's and my own education here. The planning commission, if someone comes to the planning commission asking to do something in particular, if it has to do with a rezoning, and then the planning commission makes a recommendation to the council, but it can also send along suggestions, and generally we get counsel from our planner, who's Jennifer with Southeast Tennessee Development District. Am I right so far?
Yes, sir.
And then we had a discussion about this particular thing, and we wanted as much permeable surface as possible and as many trees as possible so that we keep our canopy, because we're all concerned about that, and fewer parking spaces. But the concern that I have, and this is what kind of what we've, the ongoing discussions have been, we can say all that, but then how do we make it happen after that? And so, am I summarizing this correctly? And so, when we vote tonight, do we need to get that in writing at that point, or is this, and I'm a bit confused as to whether or not it's the DRC that needs to get that in writing, or the council? Are those legitimate questions? Am I asking those right?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so I guess I'm asking you, Phil. How do we make this happen so that we're all planning and making our time what we want it to be?
Well, you currently have an ordinance draft, I think, for first reading here this evening, as I remember, had four conditions on it on there. If you want to have seven conditions on your ordinance, you would need to have those written in, or you may need to defer until a meeting a little bit later in order to be able to get all of those placed in there. Because an ordinance cannot be substantially changed from the first reading to the second reading, whenever you do that, without having to have another reading. So if you want to do anything, it's the quickest manner possible, at least you may need to defer this evening after you come up with what you think are appropriate.
So we can talk about some more when it comes up.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else to address the council? We'll get to you in a second.
So Roger Davis, living in Vernonwood. This issue may be a little orthogonal to what we're doing here tonight, but I guess I'm concerned about the access to Signal Mountain in general. When we had that ice storm from about a few weeks ago that only lasted about one day, the, let me see, I get Robertville Road and the W Road were closed, and if you tried to go to work on that day, there was bumper-to-bumper traffic all the way back to beyond Crewitz from the CBS stoplight all the way back. So that brings up the other concern that I have about the overhang of rocks that we have, as majestic as they are, as you leave Signal Mountain. I'm afraid that someday we're going to have a major rockslide. And I'm not talking about a few rocks, I'm talking about 100,000-ton boulders that are going to close the road. Now, I don't know if we've ever had an assessment done on the safety, on how long those rocks are going to last. Is it going to be 10 years? Is it going to be 1,000 years? Is it going to be six months? But we're going to be in real trouble if those rocks ever come tumbling down. I mean, you almost drive under the mountain. And you saw what happened with the ice storm. I mean, we really are very isolated up here in a way. And just the other night, Saturday night, when it rained hard, my wife and I were going downtown, I mean, the road was almost washed out. So we got rain, we got ice, and we got rocks, kind of threatening the access to the town. I don't know if this is talking about Tennessee Transportation District, or if the council has jurisdiction over this kind of an issue, but we're vulnerable to the weather and to, you know, basically just the movement of the earth. I mean, we could be shut off. So I don't know how exactly, what we want to address it, but I think we all know we're pretty vulnerable sometimes getting up here and then not being able to get off the mountain. pretty vulnerable sometimes getting up here and then not being able to get off the mountain. I don't know how you wanna address it here, but I just wanna raise the concern.
And this is not going to satisfy your concern, cause it doesn't satisfy mine either. But we did have a meeting with T-Dot in October or November. Well, we got them and their staff. Got them and their staff to come up, be with us in a public meeting, and discuss what plans they have for our access up and down the mountain. Where are we as far as funding's concerned? What are the different plans? So, they are, and we also learned at that time, they're performing maintenance on that road regularly, cause it is a T-Dot maintained road, it is not ours. And they are checking it regularly, to the point that I believe the council was satisfied with what they shared with us, but not answering those specific questions.
What about the rocks?
Well, that's, we, that's never...
That's not T-Dot, right? That's us.
Well, if it affected the road, it would still be T-Dot. And I'd imagine it's something they'd look at. It's their first thing they'd do.
Right. The project that is underway now, they have a multi-million dollar project that is funded, they've started the engineering phase of it. You may have seen the surveying that's been going on, on the road over the last several weeks. One of the aspects of that project is rock wall mitigation. So they are gonna look at that, as well as the drainage and the undermining of the road. So, the things that you're concerned about are what they plan to address in their project. The details of that, we don't know, but the project is being funded through the increase in gas tax, and they fund those segmentally. So, they can't say the whole project's funded, but it has story through the process and has funding through the engineering phase, anticipating that once that's completed, the actual work phase will be funded as well.
In a testament to a decent job of this council, that's been an issue for several of us who are sitting up there. And we've worn them out. And first time in twenty years, we got them to come up and tell us what they do, what they've been doing, what the plans are. And in part of that, we learned that they're up here weekly, cleaning out the gutters, for example, because if those things get clogged, it's when you get the river, you know, sometimes it's unavoidable to get those lakes across that road, but at least we know they're maintained. But thank you. Thank you very much.
Six, eight, nine, six, four, one, road. Please, very much.
Um, sir.
My name is Adam Bach, six oh nine Albert Road. And this may not be the time to ask this kind of question, maybe for another meeting later on, but I have to ask, who is gonna be responsible for maintaining and taking care of Albert Road? It's a very overcrowded road right now, it's in very poor shape, been no work on that road in years and years and years, and we're gonna add more traffic and more congestion onto that piece of property. So, I've got a couple of questions there along that line. Somebody's gonna have to take the financial responsibility to fix that road and where people can travel on it. I've lived there on that house for forty-two years, we used to play ball on the street, and you can't even walk on that street now, double run and get run over. So, who's it gonna pay for? Y'all or the developer? That's a beautiful house right there, always been really pretty, now we're gonna tear it down and put a house off there. So it's not a very good thing. And then, there's people that are very close to that house. This is gonna affect the financial impact whenever that is torn down and they put a piece of building there, that their property values are really gonna drop. So I would ask you to think about that. If it happened to you, would you want somebody to put a commercial piece of property right next door to your house?
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes ma'am.
Rosemary Barner, six zero seven Albert Road. I live behind the house that they want to rezon. Very close, as I've said before, I think a lot of you weren't here. My house was the garage for this house. And I back up to three properties, one of one group of properties, and two more lots on Miles Road. And since I've been approached to sell my properties, the, on Miles, at the corner of, out of Miles and Tap, there are four lots there, and I back up to them also. And they've been bought by a developer. And I think, if this, if this property goes, then the next will be that property, which is side-by-side with this property at the corner, Tap and Albert. And I think the properties may be behind, the other two behind me, and like I said, since I've been approached of mine, that I think that whole area will go commercial. And I think that will ruin that neighborhood. With Albert, that was a way to stop at the highway commercial now. And as I've said before, with commercial, you get noise, more noise, more light pollution, more trash, more traffic. And as Mr. Bach said, with Albert and Miles both, they're narrow roads, and about where they want to put the entrance there on Albert, is about where is the dip is, where the fog accumulates, and also where people that are speeding down the road, that's about where they start putting on the brakes. And it's about, what, three quadrants away from Tap. And it's, it's a narrow road, you have to even be careful now to have two vehicles to pass. They're fully ditched, that's about the same for Miles. And I just think that this is, once this goes, the rest of it will go, and then we're gonna stop. We'll go to the end of the town limits where James comes into Tap, and where the Signal Mountain sign is. We, I would rather not have this, like I said, with block grant or growth. In fact, I don't want Jamesville with block grant or growth, James Boulevard, or any of this. But we really have to, I think, maintain quality and have better design restrictions and requirements, because we want, you want to like something that you're gonna have to see all the time, and you'd like for it to be pleasant and cool. As I've said before, it's been proven that people will not shop if they have to, in the heat. And that also, good neighborhoods with shrubbery and freeze increase the quality of life and reduce health costs. As I've said, that's just come out. I mean, we all knew that it was a good thing, but it's been proven to reduce stress, and I just think this is, will go. All of these, all of these lots will fall in. And like I said, I think if my property does, I think it's gonna get the whole neighborhood to go. And we're, Brockton, that road is just a little past my property line, and it runs into his property line, his acreage and house. And all of that would be affected, much less the rest of the neighborhoods.
Thank you ma'am.
I'm gonna bring us around full circle again, sorry. Back to school, just trying to land on the rezoning. I wanna say...
Put your name on it.
Melissa there, three one oh nine Beetree. And I sent a letter to everyone.
I got your email, thank you.
Yes, that letter, email, right. Thank you. And I wanna say, Melissa?
Yes.
I like the idea she came, to Annie, wherever Annie went, to Annie. Those are great suggestions. I love those suggestions. My letter or email, I still think that the town council owes the residents a publicating a quote form. I'm tired of emotional discourse and everything too, and I, listen, and I heard your responses, I understand everything you said there. We've still got friends and neighbors who don't know what has happened. I'm not saying ask them whether they're for or against, I think you all need to explain why you ever formed a committee, a viable committee. What it did, and as succinctly as possible, what you found, what the good things were from it, bad things for it, you know, win-win that we've had through the whole process. Some of these suggestions, I think, are win-wins here. What you could do, what you couldn't do, all these committees. I had one mom down my street say, I don't even know where to go if I have a concern about the schools anymore. It's with my student, I contact the teacher, I contact the, you know, principal's office, help me get through. I don't know my school board representative, I think. Kathy Lemon is doing a good job. They don't know, don't know how to reach out. She's trying to form an advisory committee, we've got these others. All of these are good ideas. I think it's confusing to people, people who, I don't know the church up here, but I have those that you all, I live with, that you all should go to church with. I started asking folks in the restaurants when I go to Crewitz, if they used to just hear talk, and it would be so emotional, they're like, well, we don't really understand what's going on, what's right and wrong. And I'm like, there's not really a right or a wrong, it's just you need to understand the issues, and you've got to be involved. You see the same faces here at every meeting. It's been the same faces at every meeting, no matter where they are. I don't think you truly know what the majority of the people on the mountain want, and I'm not saying they want a separate school district, or that they don't want a separate school district. I don't think we know what the issues are here totally that everybody wants. We know what the ad hoc committee wanted, we know what this group wanted, what do the people who elected you as officials want? I don't think we know that. I'm not saying that if you have, maybe we're gonna come out either, but maybe if you didn't have one on a weeknight, that's another one of my ideas, Sunday afternoon. I hate doing anything on Sunday afternoon, because that's reserved for church. However, you're gonna get a lot of people who are at sports events, there's scouts tonight, there's all kinds of school activities, you've got some folks who don't wanna get out after dark, you know, and I just still think you're open. And I think at that time, you can say, okay, our school board representative's this one, we have this idea, well, we have, you have like, somebody as a facilitator, you know, to try and form these ideas. Go here on a whiteboard and do that, come back and then say, here's our plan, here's, you know, by this deadline, we're gonna have this. You either come to a meeting, you write us, you phone us, whatever. Just my comment.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Claire Rock, senior forty carriage here. Want to speak on the reader board issue that I saw on the agenda. It's still on there, I think, for tonight. The, on the agenda, that discussion of a reader board, which I course is a scrolling message board rightly lit to attract the attention of the person who's driving by. Reader boards are prohibited in Signal Mountain. That is based on the feedback sessions and what is deemed acceptable to maintain the mountain look by the DRC. On two previous occasions to two different councils, a variance for a reader board at Signal Mountain High School was requested, and both times, those two councils wisely denied that request. In two thousand fifteen, a reader board was included on the number addition plans, but was removed. And tonight, there's another attempt to be made to get a variance, or to start looking at, trying to get a variance for a prohibited sign at Signal Mountain Middle High School. What's the process to ask for a variance? It is pretty straightforward. Building inspectors, gives you an application, sends it to the DRC. The DRC then explains to you why that's a variance, they cannot give you a variance. This would be because it's a prohibited sign, a reader board. They cannot give you a variance if they wanted to for a prohibited sign. And then you go to the council, and the council can determine whether you get a variance or not. The DRC sometimes would be able to send a, somebody or a member of the DRC could come and speak during that time, or send some input. The building, our building inspector, I understand, has explained to the individual who wants to move forward with this variance, the procedure. But the DRC lies on, Dr. Spalding told this applicant that she did not have to go to the DRC, but you just can't do an in-run around the commission. So the process is not being followed. What are the pluses of a reader board? There aren't any that I can think of. I don't know what information is on a reader board that students can already get from multiple sources. What are the minuses of a reader board? Probably the most important one I can think of is it is a distraction to drivers, especially teenagers. Why on earth would you wanna distract teenagers when they're driving? They need to keep their eyes on the road. Does this set a precedence? Well, certainly it does. And the town won't be able to deny that type of sign to churches, to businesses, to the other elementary schools. If the council grants a rezon to that residential property up here behind the shopping center, and they put up a grocery store, you can't deny that a reader board out there in front either. So Dr. Spalding has also made comments in public meetings, that he would like a reader board at the entrance to the town, at the shopping center to highlight the business of the month, and here at town hall, where he said that would tell people when meetings would be, which these people already know when the meeting would be, and give weather and road conditions. Another concern I had is since this will set a precedence, what will prevent the Signal Mountain Middle High School from erecting a much larger board in the future? This one, I tell you, I understand, is supposed to be a very small board, and cost five thousand dollars. The one that was denied by council, the last council, was twenty-five thousand dollars. So the agenda with this variance was sit down Friday afternoon, and the council has not discussed this at a work session that I'm aware of, and it skipped the DRC process. And I would just like to ask, how did it get on the agenda tonight? I know the individuals who is looking at, and sort of the head of this, or sent to request this, or start this process, I don't think can just ask to have this put on the agenda. So what was the process that it got off the agenda tonight when it has bypassed the DRC?
Can we say that till we, till the agenda, till the item comes? Sure. Thank you ma'am.
Exactly what is a reader board?
Well, we'll talk about, that's how we get to the issue, we'll talk about it. Anyone else like to address the council? Seeing no more, we'll close the citizens' opportunity to address the council. Next on is the variance request for the SMMHS message sign. There you go, that's what I will talk about. So now let's, let's address that question. I think that's a, I think it's a reasonable question. Very reasonable. Now we've got here. Excellent. You want...
Let me begin. In the municipal code, in the side ordinance, there is a specific section to address variances. Fourteen five sixteen. It says the town council is authorized to permit variances in the administration of this chapter, the design regulations. With good taste and unusual circumstances and/or practicality justify the granting of variance. Part of the intent of these regulations is to promote creativity in signs. Second section of that says, to apply for a variance, a person must file a written request with the council setting forth what variance is requested and the reasons for the request. The town councils, the town council shall administer all applications and all requests for new sign variances of a permanent nature, and may hold a hearing of such petition if it desires to do so. It is correct that these signs are prohibited by our side ordinance. So, our building official could not permit one, and doesn't have the authority to provide variance. The planning, the DRC could not permit one, and doesn't have the authority to provide variance. The section says... The section says that a variance request is made in writing to the town council. You have an email in your packet that constitutes that request. The request is made. The rationale for the variance is that placement on the property will be far enough away from Chapelford Ridge, and the sign will be small enough that it will not be visible from a public roadway. Thus, the nature of the variance requested. And the precedent that would be set would be that a variance might be allowed if the sign is not visible from a public roadway, if future requests were to be made. So that's.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Will.
To answer her question, I contacted him to be sure that that was proper procedure, and that's what is dictated here. So that's your answer to your question.
So now let's ask where the sign goes, or the proposed sign goes.
It's like it's the first entrance of the high school.
But I mean, where, how is it? There is an issue of distraction.
There's a lot of distraction.
And let's do it for driving, seeing it sort of head-on, and doesn't have to, you know, shift their focus necessarily 90 degrees to read the sign while they're driving. So is that where they're talking about? I mean, how would you read the sign if it's on the side of San Val Road and you're driving down San Val Road, without turning your head 90 degrees and taking your eyes out?
As I understand, the intent would be perpendicular to the road, so as you're approaching it, you could read and face on it.
Okay.
So also, before we get any further, I might also further explain, further question is, this section also stipulates that council has 60 days to take action on this. So we got this request, I went ahead and put it on the agenda for tonight, and then whether you take action or not, you have a work session, another regular meeting, and then probably even another work session available to you to address this before your 60 days runs. So that's why we went ahead and put it on the agenda, so that you can have advantage of as many meetings as possible within that 60 days.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until the work session, so we can have a longer discussion. And I buy it procedural.
I have a second. We have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, before we do that, and I don't have a problem with it, Ms. Meyer is here. Did you write the email?
Yes.
Okay. So in the interest of if we do tables, and can I ask her directly, is that okay?
Yeah.
During discussion, okay. I would like to see, because it, I mean.
Do you need her to come up to the podium and?
If you don't mind, would you mind?
Carol?
I would refer.
Yeah. Thank you, ma'am.
Before, if I could just clarify, because on this map, it's not a map.
That's not it.
Overhead. Where exactly will the sign be located?
That's what I'm asking you. This is hard to tell where it is.
I'm Kristy Meyer, 9/12, line of circle.
Oh, that's okay.
Thank you.
I'm the current PTSD resident at Signal Mountain Middle High School.
Hold on one second. All right, I'm just trying to.
Look at this one. So if you're coming in to the high school, and Kristy, is this correct, this is where you want the sign?
Yes.
So no, you'll be on the left.
So it's way on back at the, at the senior high.
At the high school, the very first time, you can turn where you actually see the high school. If I've been having trouble figuring out where it was.
So you passed the ball line.
Well, there's two different places that they had talked about. The first one is right when you come around, you know, you go into No One, and then you do the really sharp curve. They had talked about, because the thing is, is they need electricity, and so they thought they could pull it from the baseball golf thing.
The lighting, yeah. May I have a point of order, please?
Sure.
I guess I asked.
Excuse me, ma'am. I'm sorry, because I want to make sure we're doing this properly. And our meetings tend to have like lots of little tangential things. And I'm wondering if when we've made a motion, discussion is about the motion? Because the motion was to table. I think we need to have this discussion, and I think we need to take as much time as we can and have it at the work session, which is why I made the motion. And so, should the discussion be about the motion, or do you just go on as if the motion hadn't been made?
I think discussion.
I can't vote on the motion until I have questions about the issue.
I would like to know from our.
A motion to table generally takes precedence on all other motions that you might have discussion on here. If you vote to table it at this point, really, you would be making this discussion at the next meeting on here. So that's a question, or table it to a definite time. If you are, we haven't had a vote, we have a motion and a second, I guess, at this point.
We have a motion and a second.
Yes.
So we then have discussion.
You have a motion and a second on a motion to table.
So there's no discussion on a motion to table?
So we can only discuss, discuss the table?
The table at this point.
Okay, then, I would like to talk about that. If we could hold, I don't mind tabling it, I just want to ask some questions, so that we don't have to wait a whole month and ask her the same questions in a month. We can come more informed to the next work session, and then talk about it.
Well, let's.
So if we can hold off on tabling, I'll table it after. I just want to ask her a couple of questions, Dan, that's all I'm gonna do.
How about if we vote on the table, and then allow me to ask some questions?
Thank you.
Is that gonna be okay?
That would be great.
Okay. I'm not Robert.
We are gonna do it directly, so we'll vote. That's fine.
Any more discussion that we're not allowed to have?
You can have discussion if three of you wants to have discussion more, if that's the way that works.
All those in favor of tabling it to our work session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
What's that, three to two?
It's a two to two at this point.
It's two to two.
Well, you could say big bucks.
We can take some better pictures and send them.
Yeah, I think, I think I'd like to talk about it during the year. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say aye, because I think I'd like to talk about it during the work session, so I could understand it better. I don't know right now if this is the thing. All right? Is that fair? So it's three aye, two no.
Trying to avoid voting in all calls.
And it's three to two.
Can I ask her to?
Item's tabled, now you can.
Okay, could I address the citizen?
Please.
Okay. If you don't mind, for the next work session, if you can possibly take more time out of your day and come and revisit, that would be awesome. And if you could just have some better pictures, so that we have an exact idea, and then I would also, I think that a potential issue might be the LED, the lighting in the morning, specifically when we have teenagers driving, and obviously in the evening, if there's a way that we can adjust it, and maybe address those issues.
It is adjustable, yes.
Okay, if you can have all of that, I would love to hear more about it.
We have.
Thank you for your time.
The next meeting is going to be on February 23rd, and it's during the day, at 12:30. And I may, I may ask this council if they wouldn't mind pushing it a half hour later, so it might be one, but that's, that'll come a little later.
Okay.
If you can make, thank you, thank you very much, ma'am.
Can I add something? This gives us an opportunity to also talk to you individually, and learn as much as we can as well, so we're better informed when it comes, so it's not just something that appears. And so, I want to talk to you too.
Okay. I didn't, I was gonna table it also, I just wanted to get some information prior to the work session, so.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
That is right, 23rd, correct?
And again, that's really the reason we went ahead and put it on the night, so she knows what you guys need to know for that, for that meeting.
Well, it's the process. All right, variance is tabled until our February 23rd meeting. Next, we'll go into resolutions. Board appointments. Go ahead and read them, be truthful.
You can entertain a motion to do them together, collectively, okay.
We have, our last work session, we worked on filling up our boards with vacancies. The terms run generally through the third, end of the year, December 31st. And we had several positions open, which we went over the applications, and came to consensus as much as we could at our agenda meeting. And we have a packet of one, two, thirteen folks that will be.
There's thirteen.
Thirteen resolutions, is it? We're not, nobody's doubled up, is there?
There are multiple names.
Okay. But if we approve all these, are we approving too many people to any of the boards? Okay, so there's no duplicate, okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve all of them if you want, or I can read each one.
One second.
Who's first?
I'll take the other first and the second. You first?
Oh, I thought you said I'll make a motion.
I'll entertain.
I'll make a.
First and Dan second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Each of these needs to be signed, correct?
Yes, sir.
And obviously, we thank all the people who volunteered. Yes. Yes, and I think we have a couple more openings. I think we got one more opening for planning commission.
We don't currently have openings for planning commission, but we're anticipating some there, and we do have some other openings, and we'll be, now if this is done, we'll advertise before we can still have openings on.
Since we're in a public meeting now, and we have a large audience, can we just go over which boards have a couple openings, so we can get the word out? If anybody wants to be a good citizen, and give up your time, talents, and credit to the town? If I have that, I might put you on the spot if you're voting. Do you still have one on the record?
We have, I vote, I vote, there's some beautification committee.
One or two?
Several, seven. And we may have openings on the MAC board. Council wanted to pull up on that for future discussion. Do we need, do we need a full board for a, for a, for a?
Well, that was kind of the issue. Well, we needed, I think we do, if we, if we have applicants, there's no reason why we can't. All right, so MAC board, what else?
We have TruRee board.
I believe we have two coming up for the parks as well.
Yes.
Rec, you're full?
Library, we will advertise those.
Do we appoint the library board, or is that our part?
You do.
You do?
And we're full.
One of those, you just. DRC, you're full?
Yes.
Okay. So those three openings, if you would please pass that word on, and see if we can't get some folks to come out and help us out. Thank you.
I think we will have opening on DRC.
The DRC? Carol, you satisfied?
Yes, sir.
Next on the list is resolution to amend the SSBC resolution number 2016-78 and number 2017-6. I've got it. Or I can read it. Here it is. A resolution to amend the resolution 2016-78. What, what number would this be, Carol?
It is 2018-17.
It's resolution number 2018-17, a resolution to amend resolutions 2016-78, 2017-06. Change the term period of the school system viability committee members, and to dissolve the school system viability committee. Whereas the school system viability committee was established by passage of resolution 2016-78 for a period to expire on December 31st, 2018, and whereas school system viability members were appointed by passage of resolution 2017-6 for terms to expire on December 31st, 2018, and whereas the purpose of the school system viability committee has been fulfilled and completed with the submission of their report to the town council, and whereas the school system viability committee concluded that an independent school system would be viable, now therefore be resolved by the town council of the town of Signal Mountain, Tennessee, the resolutions 2016-78, 2017-06 are hereby amended, and the terms of all members of the school system viability committee shall expire, and the school system viability committee shall be dissolved upon the passage of this resolution. And I have a suggestion for amendment of that language. Right?
Right.
Motion and a second before we can.
Yes. Do we need, okay. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
A second.
We have a first and a second discussion, and I would like to open discussion, because I'd like to amend the item that says, whereas the system, school system viability committee concluded that an independent school system would be viable. I'd like to put in, I don't know where it went, oh, that's not true. But I wanted to mirror the language that was in the report.
Do you recall?
No, because of you.
I know, I know, I know. Too many darn papers today. How much of the language do you want to have? We have concluded, concluded that it's viable if, I'll find it, I'm sure I'll run into, viable if certain, here it is. So it would be replaced, that whereas would be replaced with, the school system viability committee concluded that a separate school district would be viable, provided that certain obstacles identified in this report can be overcome. And that reflects the language from the report. I appreciate that amendment, I could not agree with.
So.
Yes, ma'am. I think. So it's a one, two, three, four, fourth whereas, and I'll read the whole thing. Whereas the school system viability committee concluded, in quotations, that a separate school district would be viable, provided that certain obstacles identified in this report can be overcome, in quotations, semicolon. So you made a motion and a second, but then a suggestion to change. So how's that work?
You need to make a motion and have a second for an amendment.
Can I make that motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I make a motion that we change the language in that point. Can I get a second? So we have a second, so we have two open motions on the.
Yeah, do we have to vote on the first one, and then?
You vote on the motion to amend first.
First, okay.
And then.
Then we vote for the resolution. All right. So discussion on the motion to amend.
I welcome the motion to change, yes. I could not, I could not have agreed to this as a resolution.
I agree too.
So I am in support of the resolution as amended.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Does the, does the wording specifically, is it specific enough to point, in the final report from the SSBC, it mentions specifically, the SSBC has identified three principal obstacles to the establishment of a municipal school district, and then it mentions those three. Is it specific enough that it refers to those, that this resolution is referring to those specific obstacles?
I believe it is, sir.
I think it is.
That's legal to do. It seems like to me, but the report only refers to those three obstacles, correct? And that, that should be pretty simple. Can I hear any other, any other discussion? Can I, can I hear it? One time, that's it. Go ahead and read it.
Would you please, because I missed a couple of words.
Whereas the school system viability committee concluded, quotations, that a separate school district would be viable, comma, provided that certain obstacles identified in this report can be overcome, in quotation. Anything else? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
That's pretty general, isn't it, Phil?
Can you add the language, y'all, y'all do that in there, the SSBC report, because it says in the report here, but this is a different document.
The, that's the, if I may.
Okay.
But it's referred to, they submitted their report to council. And then that report is referred to in the quote, was the thought, but it, that's not satisfactory.
Can you say? I don't want to limit it to the three either.
I don't want to limit it to the three either. I think they're, you know, they don't say one, two, three. Here are the three things.
They do.
They talk about other things. There could be obstacles as well throughout the report. The language in this resolution needs to be compatible, if not identical to, the ones in the report from SSBC.
Which is what?
Which this does, in my opinion. Now, it satisfies me. Now, I don't know if it satisfies the law or Dan, you, but I think that is... That's... We need to get to that point.
Yeah, I think that's what we're trying to do. Just want to make sure that we're doing it right. Should it... The official name of the final report was the final report of the school system viability committee. Is that mentioned specifically? Because that's the document we're referring to, and the objection is outlined by the SSBC.
The wording on it is the whereas before the one that's in question reads, whereas the purpose of the school system viability committee has been fulfilled and completed with the submission of their report to the town council. So that is the report that it's referring to. The following whereas speaks to the obstacles identified in that report. Again, I'm not satisfied with that. That was the rest.
Yeah, I mean, I'm satisfied if Phil says it's satisfactory, especially one.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie spots her. Next, I have...
Mayor, yes, Phil might have had that.
I gave it to Carol.
Someone did.
So she has it, so she can probably get down.
May I hear your original motion?
Oh, thank you. Discussion on the original motion, Mr. Se...
Let's kill it, so we vote no?
Well, no. No, you've had a motion to amend the original motion here at this point in time. That has been approved. And now you need to have a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
As amended.
Yes.
Can I have a motion to approve some of... Second, we got first and second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Brilliant. And the next one is... Can I get a number on this one?
Two oh eight dash one eight.
Resolution Number 2018-18. Resolution commending Susan Sparrow, Dr. John Friedel, Tom McCullough, Tom Peterson, Charles Spencer, Amy Wakine, and Melissa Wood for their service to the town of Signal Mountain as members of the school system viability committee. Whereas, the school system viability committee, SSBC, was established for the purpose of evaluating the viability of establishing funding, operating, and maintaining a municipal school system and reporting associated findings to the town council. And whereas, Susan Sparrow, John Friedel, Tom McCullough, Tom Peterson, Charles Spencer, Amy Wakine, and Melissa Wood were appointed as members of the SSBC. And whereas, the members of the SSBC contributed an extraordinary amount of talent, time, and effort towards the fulfillment of their duties and responsibilities. And whereas, the outstanding work of the SSBC members culminated with the submission of an excellent report of their findings to the town council, now therefore be resolved by the town council of the town of Signal Mountain, Tennessee, that Susan Sparrow, John Friedel, Tom McCullough, Tom Peterson, Charles Spencer, Amy Wakine, and Melissa Wood are hereby commended for their service to the town of Signal Mountain as members of the school system viability committee. A move for approval?
A second.
Any discussion?
All of... I'd just like to add a thanking for their service. That was absolutely a lot of work and efforts and it didn't cost the town anything, so thank you.
And the report was excellent. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Any members here? Amy's here now. Tom just stepped out, is he still here?
He stayed through the...
He stayed as long as he could. No, thank you. Thank you, Amy, for... Amy, excellent work. That budget was unbelievable. And just the accolades we got back from the Department of Education. The Department of Education was impressive. Considering you're one of three people now that can figure out the BEP in the state of Tennessee. Next are ordinances. And I have a certificate. Are you going to take off?
Okay.
Okay, because I want to sign and get you your certificate. Next on the agenda is ordinance rezoning LDR to OD dash fourteen oh three Taft Highway. And that is... There is no number, right? This is first reading, I'm just looking, here it is. Do I need to read the whole thing?
Just the heading.
Just the heading. An ordinance to rezone parcel zero nine eight JB zero one two hundred from low-density residential district to office district. This was a hot topic, should I read the whole thing or...
If you want, let me get into the conditions that I'm thinking of.
Okay. And this isn't, so this isn't commercial?
This is going into an office district zone, not into highway commercial. So I think that was one of the questions that came up initially on here. And the recommendation from the planning commission at this point in time was to allow it to be rezoned to office district, which is one of the questions here. It does not have the restriction of office only. And that was one of the suggestions that was made. But there are four conditions here on the property, one of which is a thirty-foot buffer to be required based on all the lots that are used for zones that's residential in the area. The maximum allowed parking for the development to be four point five parking spaces per one thousand square feet of building. So the larger the building, would require four point five parking spaces. The development must be used only as a professional office, is referenced in the current ordinance before you. And the development must only be one story in height. So those requirements are the four recommendations the planning commission has made. And if you include additional requirements, then you would need to include those either this evening or at the next meeting when you have it. And if you have substantial changes to that, it will require additional reading.
So we could pass the ordinance point three thirty with amendment?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. And this is not passing it for good. We still have a call in here, correct, the parcel?
And if I'm not mistaken, one of the things Dan mentioned was it goes to the... They go to the DRC, and I think that's a provided for.
The TruRe.
It will be required. So that stipulation is already part of the process. So the only two things that you mentioned that are not mentioned are Tree Island and the Permian.
And the Permian service.
And the Permian. And we'll talk about that in a minute.
And Tree Island in general is something that the DRC would look at in terms of landscape and all that. So it may be something we take to address.
Okay.
Are we in discussion of this yet, or do we need to go first?
We have a motion.
I'll move for approval. We have a second? I'll second. Now we're in discussion, Dan.
So... I believe it was Mary Hudson isn't here tonight this yet. She said she wasn't going to be able to make it. So...
Mr. Hudson's here, though.
That's right.
Is he?
So she wrote a nice letter today. And Rosemary reflects some of what you said. And I think maybe another citizen, or Wendy, had also mentioned it as well. And I think the concerns that are brought up are legitimate. And some of them have to do with the fact that, and this is something we've been discussing from an ongoing basis, is we can ask for things, but our code doesn't do a good job of what happens if somebody doesn't do it with trees. And this is like an ongoing discussion within the planning commission. And it's one of the things that I think we need to fix. Everyone on the planning commission, as far as I know, is just... Well, I mean, I know everyone's a volunteer. They're all, you know, they're just citizens that care about the town just like you do. And if it was right next to my house, I would be dead set against it, always. But also, if I owned the house and I wanted to sell the house, I would want to find a way to be able to sell my property. And so these are the kinds of things that we come up with that planning commissions have to deal with. All volunteers, all who love the town just as much as everyone else. And from the training that we take and we're taught, you know, what good planning is... Again, I'm a dulcimer player. So my experience is not in being a professional planner. So we read, and we have to take training to be on the planning commissions. One of the things that you want to do is step down from commercial as it heads into residential. And no one here wants this place to look like, you know, commercial stuff all the way out. So that's the problem that we're trying to solve. And an office is better than a gas station. I think everyone would agree with that, but, you know... So those are the problems. I just want you to know that it's not a bunch of people who... Our jobs, or at least the way I see my job, is not that we're pro-development or anti-development. It's to try to plan in such a way so that, forgive me if I step on anybody's toes, so that we don't end up through a bad process of having a CVS sitting right next to the road where you used to have the coolest old building that existed in Signal Mountain. You know, it could be something else and it's not there anymore. So I guess that's all. I just wanted to say that it's not, it's not easy. I mean, you can't be on the planning commission to try to make everybody like you. It's not going to work out. You just have to deal with hard decisions. And so I think that's where this came from, in my opinion.
Any other discussion?
So, Dan, why did you vote for this? I mean, what were your anticipations of what this was going to look like?
I think we have to be careful in pretending that what a developer shows us is truly what it looks like at first. Because that's not true, exactly. They can show us something and build something else as long as it fits the specs. So I'm not pretending about what it's going to look like. I objected to the number of parking spaces. And I ask that we do everything we can legally to keep as much tree canopy as possible. But it boils down to you've got a person who owns a piece of property who wants to sell it. And it's clearly in a commercial zone. It's going to be hard for them to sell that property as another residence. So then what's the best way of doing it? So that's why I voted yes. But also, why I said I'm talking too much right now is because I recognize it scares me going forward that we can make these recommendations. And if we can't enforce these recommendations, and so... Does that make sense? So that's where... And the Design Review Committee is very important in that process as well.
To answer the two questions about the residents who are concerned about their property value, how does that actually impact property value other than a personal subjective idea? I mean, how does, if you're next to commercial, how does it affect your property value?
My guess is that it doesn't answer to what extent it reduces the value. I can't tell you. A lot depends, there are too many variables to really know. The option is, or maybe not the option, but one of the options is the land, the houses there, vacant. And nobody takes care of the yard. They can't sell it. And it becomes a nice one. And that's not exactly an enhancement to somebody's, you know, adjacent neighbor's yard either. That's hypothetical, and we're dealing in hypotheticals. So you try to run through all those things. In this case, the developer, I thought, made an impressive proposal for the use of that land that's consistent with not only the nature of our commercial district, but with the town in general. As described by the planning commission, you know, we are a woodland community. And we want to... I felt like this was consistent, the best use of the land. And that's why I voted for it. Does it extend the commercial district?
Sure.
The last, I can't tell you the last time I saw somebody build a residential house on Taff Highway. The likelihood, I mean, the perfect place for an extension of the commercial district to work to extend the commercial district is along the Taff Highway, adjacent to the existing commercial district. To me, that's just a logical extension. If it goes down the Miles Road, so be it. That's just... And we deal with those cases one at a time and evaluate whether they're beneficial to the community or not. This one, I think, is, I think it's well-presented. Whether it's exactly, it turns out to be exactly the way it's presented to us, I don't know. But we'll count on the DRC if we have another chance to look at it as the plans develop. But there is no right or wrong here, you know. Better, good, we're doing the best that we can. I think we have to honor the situation that it is private property. And I really think this is the best proposal.
And the things that Wendy said were very important because now's the time for us to speak up and say, we want to make this as good as, you know, can possibly be.
And that's why we have, you know, public meetings. And if we want to invite the developer, and I talked to the developer. I mean, he's more than willing, I think, at least that's the indication I got, that he's willing to have as many meetings as we would like to have to explain what they're trying to do.
Yeah, Bob, and I'll add one other thing. This concept of, I didn't, I confess, I might not have even known what the word fiduciary meant before I came on the council. But we have a fiduciary responsibility to this town as well. And if we want Albert Road to be paid for and made better, funds come in to do that. And one of the ways they come in is through the limited amount of commercial property that we have. And this is a step down in that direction that actually helps with amenities in the town. So again, not everybody's going to be happy all the time.
Out of curiosity, because I think a couple of people mentioned it. They talked about the use of Albert. Why wouldn't this open up the Taft Highway? That solves part of the problem because the state's responsible for the upkeep of Taft Highway. We are not.
The plan is for there to be an entrance exit off the highway and Albert as well.
So to reduce wear and tear traffic on Albert, can we request them just to have one off town?
Actually, the planner recommended that access be from Albert and not the highway. So you would have, you would have interaction coming out onto Albert. And if you're going to the highway, then you'd have another intersection there. So the option of having both of those would limit access in terms of interaction and intersections.
And there's no turn lane there on Taft Highway, right in front of that.
So the planning commission discussed that, though?
Yeah, and that's why we ended up with two, you know, two hours.
Yeah, we had a very discussion, this exact same discussion, yeah. It keeps, it makes it safer because traffic's not just completely coming to a stop all the time.
I think the issue, frankly, I think the issue of Albert Road is a separate issue. And I don't disagree with what Adam said. I think Albert is a bad road, and it's dangerous. But I'm not sure that the presence of this particular development has really any real impact on that, on the use of that road from connecting James Boulevard to Taff Highway.
But it is a wrong, this is an ass, the planning commission four to one. So somebody was obviously against it. What was the conversation there?
Jason Farmer was against it. He didn't talk a lot.
And Jason, you know, quite frankly, kind of confused us in his objection because he had argued for this kind of, this idea of step down. In other words, you know, taking the least objectionable...
That whole commercial.
Right. And so, and that's what has been done here. This is about as soft as you can get backing up to a residential area. And so I was kind of surprised at his objection, but it was...
I wouldn't speak for him.
Yeah.
Alright, we have a first and a second for the first reading of this. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just...
Oh.
I had a vote. I was just going to, I didn't enter in on the discussion again. That was just, well, we, we're just going to have this one more time, but we're going to have a public, you know...
This allows you to go to a hearing because if you don't do this, you can't have a public hearing.
But I'm glad you interrupted because we, there were a couple...
Two other items.
Yeah, two other items that we have not discussed that need to be discussed and held.
Okay, I'm sorry, you changed the middle of the vote.
Yeah.
Huh?
The middle of the vote.
I know, I will stop.
Try that.
Right, for one, and one has not spoken, I need a vote.
It's unusual for Amy, though. It's unusual for Amy, though.
Just Amy.
I didn't vote.
Oh, are you abstaining?
No, I didn't think Bob would either, because then you started talking, and I said, yeah, I can vote.
How do we rectify this?
I can vote, I needed clarification.
Reconsider if you did have a vote, but I don't. Can I make a motion reconsider so we can finish the discussion?
Yes, you can.
I'd like to motion reconsider so we can continue to discuss this. We got a second. Everybody in favor?
I just wanted to make sure that we.
Everybody in favor?
Yes.
Now we can discuss again.
There was a request, or two additional items, one of which was the DRC, which is our process, but Tree Island and permanent parking, which I think are worthy additions to the request for, for additions.
Yeah, that's right. Additions. My understanding is the developers have been willing to.
Yeah, they all, they do whatever. That's the impression I got, that they're very willing.
How do you rectify that enforcing it, though? Do you think that's a point?
Sorry.
Did someone?
What'd you say?
Was that you?
Somebody was waiting on me, and I told them I'm sorry. So go ahead.
Well, I agree with what you were saying, but I also am still confused on how do we enforce that? They can promise that they're going to do all these things, and really, as long as they meet the criteria that the planning commission sets out.
If they are listed as requirements in the ordinance, and they fail to comply with those, then the zoning would revert.
Okay, that's what I.
That language is actually in the ordinance that their failure to comply with these conditions would result in the ordinance being null and void. And because of that, you're trying to get from low-density residential to an office district. If you don't have that, then all you can do is build a low-density residential home.
Now, excuse me, Dan. Remember the discussion we had about design materials, architectural standards, and all of those that have yet to be implemented officially? So what we have to rely on is the rules and regulations that exist today. The government, the DRC is the gatekeeper. Unfortunately, our requirements are very meager. And so we are, we are not in a very strong legal position to impose certain requirements of appearance and materials. So we have got to work, the DRC has got to work with a willing developer to make sure that they are, and are willing to contractually commit to standards that we want to achieve. That's where we come to the second reading, and if we get those, then we will be able to feel like we've got a reasonable deal. That's how I see it.
Did the mayor say that we were going to have the developer an agenda meeting? Or is that, was that an option?
Did you say?
Did you say that we could have the developer the agenda meeting?
I'm not sure if he'd be willing to come. Say that again.
Did you mention that we were going to?
I did not.
Is that a possibility?
I'm sure I might be asking. The indication, I did have him asking that question, but the indication I got from him.
Bob, would you come and attend to me?
Yes.
Always here.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't say.
I think in fairness, that we got.
We're in the middle of the vote, you cannot come up here.
I don't think that.
No, he didn't. Are we ready to vote now?
I'm ready.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
I vote.
You voted, right?
I did.
All right, good. Next on the list is discussion items. Anybody got discussion items? Dan.
I'd like to bring up one.
All right.
In our work session, we did not come to a conclusion as to whether or not the town, any of us can ask any town employees to expend time and resources pursuing the obstacles that are mentioned in the SSBC report, pursuing conclusions of those. I still think we need to have some conclusion there. Can we? Are we? We just didn't finish that. I think we were worn out.
Well, we had a two-vote tie in that sense on that, on that motion.
Yeah, we never did make any attempt to do anything other than generate a report. We did that, to me, it's concluded. To go back and say that there's anything else involved in it, I mean, I just don't see that that's going to be the case. I don't see the need to go forward with anything other than the fact that the report's been generated and the viability committee has been dismissed. I don't know exactly or remember all the context of what was additionally trying to be brought forth on that vote.
Well, I think it's an interesting situation, because the question is whether or not the council wants to be an advocate for this particular issue, or wants to be perceived, or not doesn't want to be perceived, but the point I was trying to make in the agenda meeting was that we have concluded our business, and that efforts on behalf of this particular issue, on behalf, you know, by members of the council or by members of staff should not exist. We should not be, we should not be working beyond what we have achieved at this point in time. That does not necessarily preclude responding to requests that come from citizens. If this issue gains some traction among a big enough group of citizens, and they want to come back and say, we'd like to explore this particular thing, we'd like to explore this particular thing, it doesn't shut out our response to that kind of request. But I don't believe, at least I don't want the citizens to believe we're working independently of them toward an objective that they don't necessarily agree with. So that's kind of what I'm, what I'm trying to achieve with this. Maybe we don't need it on.
It seems like we said that on the front end, that we said that this was a report, that we were not trying to take a position over this, and that any inference of that going forward is just the, maybe the individual concern. I don't know that we can address that, other than the fact that I don't think anyone up here is pursuing those aims.
Well, there were, it was talked about, that there were open questions to get answers to, and I have all the answers I need to read that. And I don't think the town should be, or the town council or the staff should be pursuing any open, or that there shouldn't be any unanswered, open questions at this point in time, until somebody brings them to us, and opens up, you know, a new issue.
If someone sends you an email to spend your time, or Bo has to spend his time, and answering that email, is that considered spending effort and time to address that? I mean, how, how would that change the situation by spending time?
I think it's a question of response, rather than, than initiating activity ourselves. And I don't know if it may be semantics and states are not worth pursuing, and I don't want, I don't want to belabor this because my birthday cake is waiting for me to be. But it's important, if it's important, we'll, we'll take it further, but I don't, I'm beginning to think maybe it's not.
May I phrase this in the affirmative, just to see how we feel about if we were to be voting in the affirmative, and I'm not, I'm not putting forth a motion at this moment. But there are three things that we referred to already this evening in the final report from the SSBC. If we were to vote in the affirmative that our council is trying to overcome those obstacles, or trying to find the answers to those obstacles, that's the question that I want to know. And I think that's where you said you feel satisfied. Those three things, the SSBC determined that it's viable.
Conditionally.
Condition on those three things. Are we trying to solve for that problem, for those three? And if we weren't, would you guys be willing to vote in the affirmative that we are trying to solve for those?
No, I would not. I'm not willing to vote, either way.
We never took, we never took a position.
I'm not talking about the past, I'm talking about the future. Our slate is clean as of now. Every, I think we're all good. The question is, the SSBC's report mentions those three things. Are we trying to solve those three things as a council? Or not?
I'm not aware that we're even addressing those, other than mentioning.
It's a non-issue. What are, if I can ask you, what, what's, I feel like the, we voted to disband the SSBC, it should be a non-issue, so what's the further, like, what's the goal? Like, what are you trying to accomplish by?
Clarity.
Clarity of what?
I've just explained it clearly. I mean, reading actually from what we have agreed upon, and what the SSBC agreed upon, there's those three open questions. It does take time, staff time, it takes energy, it takes money, I mean, if we're, if we're going to put more time into this, are we, as a council, our job, those two gentlemen at the end of the table work for us? And that's the way, if you look at the way the thing is set out. Are we directing them to pursue answering those questions as a council? We never even established that.
They weren't doing that before. We had a committee doing it.
Now, the committee was told not to.
I think they tried to pin down and limit the power of this council, and I don't understand why.
That's what I'm trying to get at. Are you trying to make sure that Chris doesn't meet with Dr. Johnson? I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be really blunt, because that's, and you may not be, and I'm not at all coming at you.
No, cool.
It seems like you're trying to make sure that none of us do anything outside of council.
I'll answer that. I would like you to be able to do anything you want outside of council, because, because we should have that option, but are we doing it representing the city of Signal Mountain? Are we doing it as an individuals at this point? That's why, it needs to be clarified, just based on the way you even asked me the question.
The question, if Chris meets with the council, is he representing himself, or is he representing, is he on council business? And that's, that's what I'd like to clarify. If we have further discussions with Almond County Board of Education and Department of Education individually, I want to be confident that that person is acting on behalf of council, authorized by council to have that discussion, because it's very hard to separate individual discussions from council business. And I think that's where some of the confusion has occurred in front of us as we've gone to just to discuss it. And all in front of us, and I think we're all in front of us, is just come up with a mechanism to define.
Well, nothing, you know, until it's brought to council and presented and voted on. I mean, I worked with Dr. Johnson, we had four or five meetings, we sat down, we even had a presentation done on all these things. I understand, I understand that. And I wasn't doing it from the council, I was doing it from the perspective of, here, I think this might satisfy, and the whole reason for that joint meeting was that we would present a proposal, we worked together, to both the ACDB and our council for consideration. Yes, I got, I got, I'm on, he says, look, I want to go to late start times, I want to work on these things with you. I'm not going to say, no, I can't do it, because our council voted that we can't talk to you.
No, that's not what we're saying. I don't, I don't think that, that's certainly not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is we have further discussions on this issue, because we've shut it down. If we shut the viability committee, we dissolve the committee, and that's the indication that we're not pursuing this activity further. But if Superintendent Johnson calls you and says, why don't you come down and have a meeting with me, I'd like to talk to you about some things. I want to know about that meeting. I want to know what the agenda is, I want to know what the objective is, and I think citizens want to know what. And that, and that's all I'm trying to get to, because I don't want whoever is, whether maybe it's, any of us, we need to be, it needs to be clear if we're acting as a council member for the, for the council, for the town of Signal Mountain, or if we're acting as an individual. And that's where I, and the line is fine, I understand that, but, but I think it's important.
Well, typically, I thought we'd talk to Bo if we were acting in one way or the other, just as a courtesy. Is that what typically you did as mayor?
Well, no, I didn't have this issue as, I can't even think why it's contentious as this, this may be speed bump. But I didn't, we didn't have thirty, you know, this third-party, this Board of Education interaction, which I think if we, in light of the discussion we've had, the conclusions we came to, and the obvious suggestions of capability, I think any further discussions with Almond County Board of Education or Department needs to be official, rather than individual. And that's all, that's all I'm trying to do is get.
If you're representing, if you're representing the council.
Yeah.
I was just trying to clarify, I'm really, I just wanted to keep that.
And I would, just, I would discourage any other discussion, a lot of members of this, of this council.
Right, for instance, if, purely hypothetical, if someone on the council asks Phil to write a letter to Todd Gardenhire, if someone else on the council asks Phil to not write a letter to Todd Gardenhire, you know, that's where the problem comes in, is, I, I believe you, Chris, that you are, no, no, totally, what, you, that you, that you are trying to figure this out, just like we are. It's just that we represent the town, and you in particular represent the town as mayor when you speak with Dr. Johnson. It's hard to separate that. If we were on record as saying the town of Signal Mountain is no longer.
It's not when you open every conversation with, hey, I don't talk for the town, this is something we have to present to them if we come to some sort of agreement, which is where we got.
If we were on record, it would be a lot easier, because if.
It actually wouldn't.
Okay, explain that, please.
Because this thing blew up, and we got people involved, right? Some people didn't get their appropriate credit. So you put the plan together, you put the presentation together, and then you present it to the two boards, have to consider it.
I don't, I don't understand, and I'm not being, not being contentious, I don't understand what you mean when you say, because people didn't get the appropriate credit, I don't know what you mean.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'm going to excuse myself. I've got people waiting on me, and we're not, we're not going to vote anymore, so I'm.
It is Dick G's birthday, so I think you need to sing it.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear Jimmy. Happy birthday to you.
I make a motion we table this to a work session. Do I have a second?
I'll second. I'll third it.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Discussion, what else you got, Dan? Anything?
What, Amy, I do, I'm sorry. But it's a good thing, and I think Nico's got to do it, he had it for his birthday party. So there were two fundraisers at the MAC this weekend, and raised, I think, over $4,000 in cash, with a couple thousand more in pledges, with money that is ultimately going to be, the plan is to get a sprinkler system, and so that was cool, and we appreciate, you know, the town working with us, and we actually have, if you get a chance to see any of the photos of it, it looks really cool. There are now fire treated curtains that go all the way around the cafeteria that can be put up to make it look really cool for special occasions, so. And it was all citizens, all volunteer, it's exactly what we said we wanted, just, the folks working on that privately, so.
Amy?
No, just, we did this.
All right, other business.
Trying to figure out a day that would not conflict with any events or vacations.
We're ready to, somebody wanted to be involved, but I forget, I think it was Senator, who was it? Our school, our school. Sorry, go ahead.
Do you know when, do you know when the school's out for?
For what?
Spring break.
Spring break?
It's like, the first weekend.
I wanted to try to do it in March, before the foliage started coming up, and it's harder to see the track out. And so, didn't want to conflict with any of the vacations, because the kids are helpful when they're involved.
Does anybody know when spring break is?
April 2nd, thank you. I want to do 14 through the 17, through the 18, because that's the first region of March Madness.
What was it?
Bob was in, is, Mount Stewart?
Mount Stewart were also participants in the past. And I would rather do it.
Can you all be patient with us for a second? Hold it down, we're almost done.
The weekend directly after on.
14 through the 18?
Yeah, that next, whatever that would be, before April and after this March Madness.
So 24th?
24th. Can we set that as our date? Saturday?
Saturday, whatever we want.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Well, is that a conflict? The 24th, anybody knows?
23rd.
Sorry?
Spring break for the private school starts the 23rd is what you're telling.
Okay. The only other option would be to move it before the 14th.
And that's coming up on us, but that would be.
10. It's about a month. A month from now, that would give us plenty of time to set up. So we'll do it March 10th, okay. We'll change it from the 24th to March 10th.
Anything else? All right, I have three things. Trey Hargert, who is the Secretary of State, sent us his annual report, if anybody on the council's interested in it. I don't know if you all count. We also have an invitation, if anybody in the council wants to, to the Clean Air Conference. Keynote speaker is Dr. Michael Warren. It's Wednesday, May 9th, 2018 at UTC. The topic is marijuana, smoking medical, smoking medical issues and policy considerations for Tennessee. If anybody wants to go, I don't intend on going. And, oh, can we get Alexis?
Yes.
Alexis, right, okay. Can we get Alexis the contact information for some of the ad hoc folks? Does that sound like what you wanted to engage, right?
Friends of Signal Mountain.
Your friends, why?
Friends, I think you've got a friend in your name, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you, thank you.
And that's it. Anything else?